Are you good? We're ready when you are. Whenever you are, you tell me. With you? Contract negotiation? What is? No. Yeah? Okay. Contract negotiations. Okay.
Everybody stand for the flag.
Pledgeance to the lives of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation for God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Madam Corks?
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners' public meeting for Tuesday, December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. The time is seven oh two. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter two thirty-one, Public Law nineteen seventy-five, notice that this meeting was published in December eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, issues of the Nutley Sun, the Herald News and the Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted in the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board and a copy is on file in the municipal clerk's office. Commissioner Kelly.
Present.
Commissioner Evans.
Here.
Commissioner Petrakko.
Here.
Commissioner Tucci.
Here.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Here.
All present, Mayor.
Minutes spent apart.
Thank you. We have Board of Commissioner meeting minutes for November twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
We also have executive session minutes for September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, October third, two thousand and twenty-three, October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three, November ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, November twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three and December fifth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Move all, move all of the executive minutes.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
That's it for minutes.
Communications, Madam Corks?
The Nutley Music Fusters Association has submitted a letter requesting permission to hold raffle on Sunday, March third, two thousand and twenty-four, at three hundred Franklin Avenue at five P M. Can I have a motion?
Move it. Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
And that's it for communications, Mayor.
Reports, Commissioner Petrakko?
Yes, I have my public safety report. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Evans?
Code enforcement report for the month of November.
Bills, Madam Corks?
Thank you, Mayor. Bill list for December ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. Public affairs, ninety thousand nine hundred twenty-one dollars and fifty-four cents. Revenue and finance, three million seventy-eight thousand one hundred ninety-five dollars and seventy cents. Public safety and one hundred twenty-four thousand four hundred and two dollars and eighty-five cents. Public works, one hundred eight thousand four dollars and eighty-eight cents. Parks and public property, one hundred and thirty-four thousand eighty-eight dollars and three cents. Water utility, eleven thousand nine hundred fourteen dollars and sixty-nine cents. Payroll as of Wednesday, November twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three. Regular payroll total, nine hundred and one thousand three hundred ninety-one dollars and thirty-seven cents. Overtime payroll total, sixty-two thousand six hundred and thirty-two dollars and eighty cents. Total payroll, nine hundred and sixty-four thousand twenty-four dollars and seventeen cents. Payroll as of Friday, December eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. Regular payroll total, one million twelve thousand two hundred and seven dollars and thirty cents. Overtime payroll total, eighty-four thousand eight hundred ninety-one dollars and seventy-four cents. Total payroll, payroll, one million ninety-seven thousand ninety-nine dollars and four cents for a grand total of six million nine hundred ninety thousand four hundred and thirty-one dollars and seven cents.
Move the bills.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
That's it for bills, Mayor.
I will comment on agenda items only. Anyone like to address Board of Commissioners on agenda items only? Seeing though, let's move to Board of Commissioner announcements, Commissioners?
I have one, Mayor. Thank you. Yes. First and foremost, I'd like to thank everyone who supported the Parks and Rec play Frozen Junior. We had three performances. They were all sold out. We had forty of Nutley's youngest and most talented actors and actresses performing in the play. It was directed by James Miles III. Miss Yasso from, from the school district did the music. Miss Bertazzo helped out and the Brzezinski family. So just thank you to everyone and thank you to everyone in Nutley for supporting it. It was a wonderful performance. We also had, that ended on last Sunday. The following Monday, we had decorating Christmas cookies with Grandma and Grandpa. We had about a hundred and fifty youngsters there with their grandmas and grandpas, and that was sold out. Another wonderful time. And in closing, I just want to wish everyone Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays and a happy and healthy New Year. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mayor, I had nothing other than to wish everyone a very healthy and happy holiday season. Merry Christmas to everyone. Let's all look forward to a better New Year. And I just wanted to extend my thanks to each of you for serving with you over the course of this year for your fellowship and for your support. I greatly appreciate it and acknowledge it to all of you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Petrakko?
Thank you, Mayor. I just like to keep beating the drum about locking your doors and your car doors, your houses. We have seen an uptick on our east side of town, which our police department is patrolling that like crazy. And we move guys around, so please help us help you. Also, we will be bringing our neighborhood watch back very shortly. That is in the works, so we need the residents' help, you know, to, you know, to aid our police department too. So even before neighborhood watch starts, if you see something, say something. Very important. This is now happening down the shore areas. It's happening all over the state. I will keep saying about this bail reform. It's ludicrous to me, you know, before the cop is off duty. And it is a lot of juveniles that we are arresting and we are catching most of them. They're out of jail before the cop is off duty making the report. So obviously, to me, that's a fail experience, experiment that needs to be reversed as soon as possible. I also would like to thank everybody from Public Safety for our little Christmas event we had last Thursday. Very well done. And unfortunately, Mayor, I would ask you for a moment of silence. I graduated in nineteen eighty-three and unfortunately, we had two deaths in the same week, which we did a moment of silence for Jerry Lepore and a very good friend of the Petrakko family in the class of nineteen eighty-three. Darren Ritchie passed away as well suddenly. So if we could just have a moment of silence, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. And this, I'd like to wish everybody the best of holidays and the best health. Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to thank everyone who participated in the holiday sipping shop. A large number of local vendors came out, a large contingent of our residents came out to, to shop and support those local vendors. It was a huge success. I want to apologize for not being there. I was away with the National Guard. But I was there in spirit. I produced a video saying how proud I was of everyone and that, you know, local businesses are integral part of this community. And when they thrive, we thrive. And when we thrive, they thrive. And so it's important that we recognize our local businesses at this time of year. And I also want to thank everyone who donated money, gift cards, whatever it may be, for our holiday treasure chest. This year was our tallest order yet. We had four hundred and sixty-five families. And fortunately, the residents of this community came through. We were able to provide for those families in need around the holidays to make sure that everyone has a very Merry Christmas. So I want to thank all the residents from the bottom of my heart for making that, that happen. We couldn't have done it without you. And that's just a testament to what a great community this is we have here in Nutley. And I want to echo all the other Commissioner sentiments. I want to wish everyone a very happy and merry holiday. I want to, like Commissioner Evans said, I thank all of you on the board here. It's been a very pleasurable year serving with each and every one of you. And I would also like to do a moment of silence for Kim Garner, who, who passed away this week as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I hope everybody had a happy Hanukkah, those who celebrate, and I wish all of you a Merry Christmas, a happy and most importantly, a healthy New Year. And with that, I think I have to turn this over to Mr. Bruno.
Mayor, we do have a need to go into executive session to discuss contract negotiations.
In motion?
Move it.
Second. Second.
Thank you. Whereas Section eight of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter two thirty-one, Public Law nineteen seventy-five, permits the exclusion of the public from meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas the public bodies of the opinion that such circumstances exist, and whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex and State of New Jersey desires to proceed to close executive session, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley moving to close executive session to discuss contract negotiations. Be a further resolved that at the time when such discussions may be disclosed to the public, shall be when and such disclosures may be made without adversely affecting the township of Nutley, pending and or anticipated legal personnel contractual matters and other matters within the exceptions provided for by statute. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko. Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
The time is seven thirteen.
You know that was that I was screaming it's like it was like.
Yes, please.
You told them to the councilors to hear him.
Streamline.
Yes, sir, ma'am.
Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor, the not the time is now eight fifty nine.
Let's move to ordinance introductions. This is Commissioner Evans. Oh, we oh, it's me. It's me and you. I see. All right. This is ordinance number three, five, three, six, in order to the Board of Commissioners, the Township of Nully in the County of Essex, creating chapter one, twelve municipal water and sewer utility of the Township Code. I move this ordinance be passed to a second reading advertising not least sun together with the notice required by law. That further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners be held at its second reading on January sixteen, twenty twenty four, move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patako.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. Or this number three, five, three, seven ordinance of the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nully. In the County of Essex establishing a sewer utility fund, I moved that this ordinance be passed to a second reading advertising not least sun together with the notice required by law and that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage of the Board of Commissioners be held at its second reading on January sixteen, twenty twenty four, move the order.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patako.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. Orders number three, five, four, oh, an ordinance to amend an ordinance codified in the code of township Nully, chapter two, two, eight, entitled vehicles and traffic, particularly article seven special zones and areas, section twenty eight. Entitled bus stops to remove the location set forth therein. I move this ordinance be passed to a second reading advertising not least sun together with the notice required by law and that further consideration of said warrants for final passage of the Board of Commissioners be held on a second reading on January sixteen, twenty twenty four, move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patako.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. Orders number three, five, four, one, ordinance to amend an ordinance codified in the code of the Township of Nully, chapter three, forty nine, flood plain management regulations, I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading. Advertising and utterly sound together with the notice required by law and that further consideration of said warrants for final passage by the Board of Commissioners be held on a second reading on January sixteen, twenty twenty four, move the orders. Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patako. Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye, Commissioner Evans.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number thirty, five, thirty eight, an ordinance to amend an ordinance codified in the code of the Township of Nully, chapter four, twenty eight, the Township Code entitled Licensing and Business Regulations, section seven, entitled Registration Fee to Reduce the Fee from one hundred and fifty, one hundred dollars and fifty dollars respectively to twenty five dollars and twenty dollars. I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading and advertising early sun together with a notice required by law and further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners be held at its second reading on January sixteenth, twenty twenty four.
I need a second.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patako.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
So program.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Thirty-five, thirty-nine, an ordinance to repeal an ordinance in our code thirty-four, oh, three, codify the code of the township. This relates to the election transparency statute that we have for pay to play, repealing this ordinance to comply with the revised state statute. PL two, oh, two, three, section C thirty of the State Transparency Act. I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading and advertise the lovely sun together with the ordinance required by law and that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners be held at its second reading on January sixteen, twenty twenty four, so remove.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Evans.
Commissioner Evans.
Television timeout here.
Okay.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patako.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. I was detained by the lower house.
That is, Commissioner.
Second. That's it, thank you.
That's it. All right, Commissioner Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor. I know a lot of people are really excited about this ordinance, however, at this time I'm going to table this for another meeting. I just want to assure everyone that the Board of Commissioners is extremely about excited about this ordinance, just as much as many veterans are. We want to make sure that we get this this ordinance right and do a do justice to our veterans who serve this community. So we're going to table this, look for more information at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Patako.
An ordinance to amend an ordinance codified in the code of the Township of Nully, chapter two, two, eight, entitled vehicles and traffic, particularly article seven, special zones and areas, section twenty-nine, A, entitled handicap park, and to add to the location set forth thereon, this is for one town, one ten, um, place.
Anybody wish to be heard on ordinance number three, five, three, four? Seeing no one, move to close.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patako.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye, move the ordinance, please.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patako.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Evans.
Yes, the ordinance number thirty-five, thirty-five, this is an ordinance accepting grant monies for one million, twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars for green acres.
Monseignor Owens.
Monseignor Owens, yes. I don't know why.
They'd better like to be heard on ordinance number three, five, three, five, seeing no one, close, over here.
Second, and just as an FYI, the project is in fact completed, all right, and it has the first shadow raider emblem emblazoned right into the turf in the state of New Jersey.
That's nice.
Aye.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patako.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Move the ordinance.
No, I'm sorry, I'm move the ordinance, I was.
Second.
I was.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patako.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one resolution on for this evening. It's resolution number three, thirty-seven dash twenty-three. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nully, County of Essex, New Jersey, that in accordance with the provisions of revised statutes forty A, colon, four, dash, fifty-eight, the following transfers appropriations in the twenty twenty-three budget be and the same hereby authorized and approved that were transferring eighty-five hundred dollars from the listed accounts to the the listed account here on, so moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patako.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Evans.
Yes, the this is my ordinance number three, eighteen, dash, twenty-three, is a refund for a affordable housing development fee payment related to two, twenty-nine Franklin Avenue, where it's been determined that the fees should be refunded in an amount of one hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Funds are available in the account T twenty-six, nine, oh, nine, nine, oh, two, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nully, County of Essex, state of New Jersey, that the Treasury is authorized to issue a refund to Donna Ponteiro in the amount of one hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Just clarify a minor misspeaking. It was two ninety-nine, not two twenty-nine, but I.
Thank you for clarification.
Commissioner Patako.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas the township of Nully has the need to acquire the services of a professional real estate appraiser to assist with real estate appraisals, tax appeals and court appearances, and to complete the necessary procedures to ensure the capture of added assessments arising from ongoing improvement activities in the township as a non-fair and open contract pursuant to the provisions of NJSA nineteen, colon, forty-four, A, twenty dot five. And whereas a tax assessor has determined and certified in writing that the value of the advocate good services for the vendor for the year will exceed thirty thousand dollars. And whereas Hendrick's appraisal company, seven Hutton Avenue, West Orange, has submitted a fee schedule for providing such services at a total fee of forty thousand dollars. This is the same amount for twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-two. There's been no change in the amount. Whereas the anticipated contract is for twelve months, beginning January one, twenty twenty-four through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, whereas funds are will be available from four, oh, one, two, oh, four, two, oh, five, and will be certified by the Chief Financial Officer, subject to the adoption of the twenty twenty-four municipal budget, whereas Hendrick's appraisal has completed and submitted a business entity disclosure certification which certifies that they have not made any reportable disqualifying contributions to a political or candidate committee in the township in the previous one year, and that the contract will prohibit them from making any reportable contributions through the term of the contract. Now therefore, whereas the business entity disclosure certification and determination of value be placed on file with this resolution, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners. Township of Nully authorizes the mayor to enter into a contract with Hendrick Appraisal Systems for the information as stated in the resolution, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patako.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
My next resolution is for legal services regarding municipal tax appeals pursuant to nineteen forty-four, A, twenty dot five, as a non-fair and open contract. The value of the contract is greater than seventeen thousand, five hundred, whereas the law firm of Iaculo Martino and Renites located two, forty-seven, I think that's right, right? Close enough, two, forty-seven Franklin Avenue has submitted a fee schedule providing for such services for a total of which night will not exceed forty-two thousand dollars. The anticipated term of the contract is January one, twenty-four through December thirty-first, twenty-four. They have completed the business entity disclosure certifications and have certified that they have not made any reportable contributions to a political or candidate committee in the township noting the previous one year. And the contract will prohibit them from making any reportable contributions through the term of the contract, whereas funds are available from account four, oh, one, two, oh, four, two, hundred, and will be certified by the Chief Financial Officer, subject to the adoption of the twenty-four municipal budget, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nully, County of Essex, in New Jersey, that the mayor is hereby authorized to enter into a contract with Stephen J. Martino of the law firm of Iaculo Martino and um uh Martino and uh uh Renites, Renites as professional services. And be further resolved that a copy of this resolution, as well as the contract, shall be placed on file with the of the township and in notice and accordance with the local public contracts law of New Jersey and the form attached here to shall be published in Nutley Sun, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Hi.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Patraco?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Uh, my next resolution is is for Millennium Strategies, which um is read through the uh Revenue Finance Department, but benefits all good departments uh in the township. Uh, whereas the Township of Nutley, through the Department of Revenue and Finance, has a need to acquire grant consulting services as a non-fair and open contract pursuant to the provisions of NJSA nineteen colon forty-four A twenty dot five. Whereas Millennium Strategies sixty Columbia Ave, Columbia Road, Suite two-thirty in Morristown, has submitted a proposal indicating that they will provide such services for a sum not to exceed forty-two thousand dollars, whereas the term of the uh of the contract is for twelve months from January one twenty twenty-four through December thirty-first twenty twenty-four, whereas Millennium Strategies has completed and submitted a business entity disclosure certification, which certifies that said certification has not made any reportable contributions to a political or candidate committee in the township of Nutley in the previous one year, and that the contract will prohibit Millennium partners, strategies partners, from making any reportable contributions through the term of the contract, whereas funds are available for the purpose of uh for this purpose from account four oh one, two oh nine, two oh five, subject to the adoption of the twenty uh twenty-fourth uh municipal budget. Uh, a certificate of availability funds has been filed by the Chief Financial Officer of the township in accordance with local budget law NJSA forty-eight colon four dash fifty-seven and NJAC three colon, uh, sorry, five colon thirty-four dot dash five dot two, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the County of Essex, State of New Jersey, one. Contract shall be entered into between the Township of Nutley and Millennium Strategies for grant consulting services for an amount not to exceed forty-two thousand dollars. The copy of this resolution will be published uh by law within ten days of its passes, and a copy of this resolution, as well as a contract, shall be placed on file with the municipal clerk, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Hi.
Commissioner Evans?
Right.
Commissioner Patraco?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Hi.
Uh, my next resolution is for uh a uh uh authorizes the treasurer to refund overpayments of tax charges for four thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifty-five cents for block thirty-three oh four, lot twenty-eight, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Hi.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Patraco?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Hi.
Uh, my next resolution, whereas RS forty-eight colon five dash seventeen allows the cancellation of property tax credits or delinquent amounts in the amount of uh less than ten dollars, the governing body may authorize the tax collector to process without further action, on their part, any cancellation of property tax credits or delinquencies of less than ten dollars, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, and hereby authorize the tax collector to cancel said amounts as deemed necessary, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Hi.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Patraco?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Hi.
Uh, my uh next resolution is is regarding tax delinquency and the uh interest charges. Whereas RS fifty colon dash uh four dash sixty-seven permits the governing body of each municipality to fix the rate of interest to be charged for non-payment of taxes or assessment subject to any abatement or discount for late payment of said taxes provided by law, whereas uh RS uh fifty-four colon six, there sixty-seven has been amended to permit the fixing of a tax rate of eight percent per annum, and it burst fifteen hundred dollars uh of delinquency and eighteen percent per annum on any amount in excess. Now therefore, uh be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, uh that one. The collect, tax collectors hereby authorized and directed to charge eight percent per annum on all taxes becoming delinquent after the due date, uh, subject to any abatement or discount for late payment of taxes provided by law. We do, we do not uh exercise this statute, so if it's over eight fifteen hundred, we won't charge eighteen percent, it's a flat uh eight percent, which is the minimum allowed by statute. Effective January one twenty-four, quarterly tax payments made by cash, check, or money order shall have a ten-day grace period. Any payments not made in accordance with Section two of this resolution shall be charged interest from the due date, as said for in Section one, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Uh, I'm gonna vote I, but I think it's worth emphasizing that these interest rates are established by statute, and this is isn't something that we're just uh pulling out of thin air, uh, so I.
Thank you.
Commissioner Evans?
Right.
Commissioner Patraco?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Hi.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners uh in accordance with provisions RS forty-eight colon uh four dash fifty-eight, tran- the following transfers of the budget uh from construction code official O N E thirteen thousand five hundred to construction official uh uh different account, three oh one two one eight, one oh one for the same amount, thirteen thousand five hundred dollars, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Hi.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Patraco?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Hi.
Whereas the Township of Nutley has a need to retain the services of an interim chief municipal finance officer to provide day-to-day financial consulting services to the township as a non-competitive and non-open contract pursuant to NJSA forty-eight uh called in eleven dash five one uh A I, which permits the award of contracts without public bidding, whereas Heather McNamara, CMFO possesses the requisite certification experience to provide these uh services to the township and is a member of the of the Phoenix Consulting Group located two seventy-five Route uh ten uh East uh Suites twenty and twenty-four in Suckasun, New Jersey. Whereas John Reinhardt of the Phoenix Consulting Group has submitted an acceptable proposal to provide these part-time services to the township at an hourly rate of one hundred and fifty dollars for a period of one year uh beginning January, uh December twenty-second twenty twenty-three through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, whereas funds are certified from three oh one, two, two, six, two oh five subject to insertion in the completion of the twenty-four uh budget, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, if the mayor and municipal clerk are hereby authorized to enter into a contract with John Reinhardt, Phoenix Consulting Group, for Heather McNamara, CMFO to provide these financial service, consulting services, an hourly rate of one hundred and fifty dollars for the term stated herein. That be further resolved, that a copy of this resolution, as well as the contract, shall be placed on file with the clerk of the Township of Nutley, and in accordance with local public contact, contract laws of New Jersey and the form attached to here shall be published in the Nutley Sun, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Hi.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Patraco?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Hi.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Patraco?
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, Jersey, New Jersey, that the court, in accordance with the provisions of RS forty-eight four dash fifty-eight, the following transfers of appropriations in two thousand twenty-three budget being and the same are hereby authorized and approved, fire, salary, and wage um, three dash zero one dash three one four dash one hundred, two hundred thousand to fire Department O N E um, two hundred thousand for a total of two hundred thousand three dash zero one dash three one four dash two hundred, I move a resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Hi.
Commissioner Evans?
Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Patraco?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Hi.
It's happening.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County of Essex, then in accordance with the provisions of RS forty-eight colon four dash fifty-eight, the following transfers and appropriations in two thousand twenty-three budget be and are the same or hereby authorized and approved from police salary and wage, one hundred and forty thousand to police overtime, one hundred and forty thousand. Um, police salary and wage, eighty thousand to police O N E, eighty thousand for a total of two hundred and twenty thousand. I move a resolution.
Second.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Hi.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Patraco?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Hi.
Okay, my next couple are for insertion, so Mr. Bruno, is it okay if I consolidate some of these? I'll read them what they are, but not the beginning?
Yes.
All right, whereas NJSA forty um four dash eighty-seven provides that the Director of Division of Local Government Services may approve the insertion of any special items in the budget of any county municipalities when such items shall be have been made available by law and the amount thereof was not determined at the time of adoption of the budget. Whereas if this said director may also approve the insertion of any items appropriation for equal amount. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County of Essex, New Jersey, hereby request Director of Division of Local Services to approve the insertion of an item of revenue in the budget of the year two thousand twenty-three in the sum of six thousand seven hundred and thirty-six dollars, which item is now available as revenue for the County of Essex Division of Mental Health and Addiction Services. Um, I'm gonna go on to the next one, that was three-three eight-two-three, this is three-three-two, three-three-nine-two-three. This one is for six thousand four hundred and fif- for six thousand four hundred and five dollars. This is our drive sober or get pulled over. My next one is three forty dash twenty-three. This one is for nine thousand, nine thousand three hundred and twenty-one dollars and twenty-seven cents. Um, this one is for the County of Essex Municipal Alliance Grant. I believe I have one more. This is three forty-one dash three, three forty-one dash twenty-three. This one is for thirty-one thousand dollars. This is New Jersey Department of Community Affairs Firefighters Assistance Grant. And that's all that I have, so I'd like to vote out the more, I move it.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Hi.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Patraco?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Hi.
Whereas Millennium Strategies LLC located at sixty Columbia Road, Building B, Suite two-thirty, Morristown, New Jersey, has a necessary experience experience and expertise to pursue the disaster relief, relief reimbursement through grants and administrative professional services seeking disaster appropriations, whereas the Township of Nutley entered into contract with Millennium Strategies LLC Act to act as their consultant at an hourly rate of one hundred and eight dollars per hour, not to ski twenty-five thousand on January first, two thousand twenty-three. Whereas the change order number one has been authorized for original contract amount to be increased by fifteen thou- by fifteen thousand, and whereas the funds are available from account number three-one three zero one two oh eight two oh five, and has been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners and Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the change order number one has attached is a change from the contract previously made by the Township of Nutley with the Millennium Strategies LLC for disaster relief services, and it is hereby authorized and approved, I move a resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Hi.
Commissioner Evans? Commissioner Patraco?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Hi.
Whereas the Township of Nutley Department of Public Safety has an urgent need to purchase four vehicles, whereas several police and fire vehicles were destroyed during this Ida storm on August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. And whereas many other public safety vehicles throughout the state of New Jersey. And whereas because of the high demand for public safety vehicles and supply chain issues, it has been very difficult to purchase on timely manner, much-needed public safety vehicles that are required to provide the continued health, safety, and welfare of the residents and township of Nutley. Whereas in accordance with the New Jersey Local Public Contract Law forty-eight eleven dash six, titled Emergency Contracts, the Director of Public Safety has notified to purchase an agent in writing with the emergency, and whereas Cox thirty-three Ford thirty-eight ten Hecktown Road east in Pennsylvania currently has inventory of a new two thousand twenty-three Ford Utility Police Interceptor AWD vehicles and new two thousand twenty-three Ford Explorer X L T vehicles, and can deliver the vehicles within less than a few weeks at a cost of thirty-eight thousand dollars per two thousand twenty-three Ford Utility Police Inter- Interceptor AWD vehicle and forty-one thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars for per Ford Explorer X L T. And while the, whereas the funds are in the account three dash zero one, three oh eight, two eleven, account three zero one, three two two, two eleven, and account three zero one, three fourteen, two eleven, and have been certified with this financial officer and cer- certification being attached to this resolution. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley authorized the purchase order to be issued on an emergency basis in accordance with the local public contracts law forty-eight eleven dash six to Cox thirty-three Ford thirty-eight ten Heck Road Eastern, Penns- Pennsylvania, a total of one hundred and fifty-six thousand five hundred and seventy-nine dollars, I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Hi.
Commissioner Evans?
I believe the, they're still part of the state bid that we use. However, we had to go out because of the timeframe and from Ida, it's been and since COVID, it's been so hard to purchase any vehicles, and we haven't in a while. Very difficult to buy vehicles and anything else, for that matter. Well, these are, these are actually vehicles that we're trying to replace from Ida. If they, if they are available, the timeframe is longer than the few weeks that they could deliver. We have. If you wait till tomorrow, they'll be gone. That's the problem. Yep. Thank you.
Commissioner Patraco?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci? Mayor Scarpelli?
Hi.
That's all I have, Mayor, tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, Mayor. Whereas sealed bid to receive for tree removal service on November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three in the Township of Nutley, and whereas Trees Plus Inc. Forty Bunker Road, East Tannen, New Jersey was the low bidder, with the sizes listed in this resolution, and whereas the contract is not to exceed forty thousand dollars from account four, there is zero one, five, twelve, two hundred, pending adoption of the two thousand twenty-four municipal budget, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that a contract for tree removal will be awarded to Trees Plus Inc. for a term of January one twenty-four through December thirty-first, twenty-four, with the township's option to extend said contract for one additional year, as per the bid specifications, I move the resolution.
Commissioner Kelly?
Hi.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Patraco?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Hi.
Whereas bids received for electrical services on November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three in the Township of Nutley, and whereas Montillo Electric LLC three nineteen, Ridge Road, Lynnhurst, New Jersey, was the low bidder for the prices as listed in this resolution, whereas said contract is not to exceed ninety thousand dollars, and funds are available from account four, there is zero one, five oh eight, two hundred, in the amount of forty thousand dollars in capital ordinance thirty-five twenty-four A, and the amount of fifty thousand dollars for services contingent upon adoption of the twenty twenty-four budget have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that a contract for electrical services be awarded to Montillo Electric LLC for a term of January one twenty twenty-four through December thirty-first, twenty-four, with the township's option to extend the contract for one additional year. I move the resolution.
Commissioner Kelly?
Hi.
Commissioner Evans? Commissioner Patraco?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Hi.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, then in accordance with provisions of RS forty-eight four dash fifty-eight, the following transfers of appropriations in the twenty twenty-three budget be and same are hereby authorized and approved for the Department of Parks and Public Property, from health insurance in the amount of sixty-six thousand, and from the recreation salaries and wages account to insurance salary and wages in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, senior citizen transport salaries in the amount of thirty-two thousand, buildings and grounds in the amount of thirty-five thousand, and a tree in the amount of twenty-seven thousand for a total transfer of one hundred and thirty-two thousand, I move the resolution.
Commissioner Kelly?
Hi.
Commissioner Evans?
Hi.
Commissioner Patraco?
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci?
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Hi.
Whereas NJSA forty-eight colon four dash eighty-seven provides that the Director of Division of Local Government Services may approve the insertion of any special item in the budget of any county municipality when such items shall have been made available by law, and the amount thereof was not determined at the time of adoption of the budget. And whereas said director may also approve the insertion of any item appropriation for equal amount. Section one, now therefore be resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, hereby request that the Director of the Division of Local Government Services to approve the insertion of an item of revenue in the budget Of the year twenty twenty-three in the sum of seventy-two thousand dollars, which I know is now available as a revenue from New Jersey Department of Community Affairs Local Recreation Improvement Grant. Pursuant to provisions of statute, section two be a further resolved that a like sum of seventy-two thousand dollars be and same is hereby appropriated under the caption of general appropriations. Operations excluded from caps, local recreation improvement Reinheimer Park and the like amount be a further resolved that the township clerk forward two certified copies. Of this resolution to the Director of Local Government Services, just as an FYI, this is a grant that we received. To redo the uh the dog park at Reinheimer and that's uh pretty much completed, we're just waiting for a couple of um. A couple of items to install in there to complete the obstacle course, I move the resolution.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Petracca.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Hi.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Whereas raffle applications have been received from the following organizations, Nutley Music Booster Association License Number sixty-nine. Twenty-three off premises fifty fifty cash raffle held Sunday, March third, twenty twenty-four Yanakos School BTO License Number seven seventy dash twenty-three. And seventy-one dash twenty-three to be held Friday, March fifteenth, twenty twenty-four whereas the application will be reviewed. Approved by the municipal clerk in the police department now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley. County of Essex State of New Jersey, the aforementioned licenses are hereby approved, the municipal clerk is authorized to issue said licenses, I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans. Bishop Petracca.
Hi.
Bishop Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Hi, whereas the township of Nutley through the Department of Public Works has a need to acquire the services of an engineering consultant as a non-fair and open contract pursuant to provisions of NJSA. Nineteen forty-four A twenty twenty-five whereas Penoni Associates eighteen oh five Raymond Boulevard Suite twenty-one oh two North New Jersey. Has submitted a proposal dated November thirty, twenty twenty-three indicating that they will provide engineering services according to the fee schedule, schedule attached. Whereas the contract is not to exceed a hundred and sixty-five thousand for general engineering services. Whereas funds are available from account number four oh one four oh four two hundred have been certified. By the Chief Financial Officer subject to the adoption of the twenty twenty-four budget. And certification be attached to the resolution now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley. Enter into a contract with Penoni Associates as described herein. Be further resolved, the business disclosure entity certification and determination of value placed on file with this resolution. Be further resolved that the notice of this action should be printed once and then Nutley send the courts with the local public contract law, I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Petracca.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Hi, I'm gonna read this uh. Resolution thirty-three thirty-one twenty-three by title, resolution by the township of Nutley. To remove a bus stop on Washington Avenue, Rutgers Place, I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Bishop Petracca.
Hi.
Bishop Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Hi, be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex, New Jersey that in accordance with the provisions of RS A forty. Eight four dash fifty-eight, the following transfers appropriation in twenty twenty-three budget be and are the same are hereby authorized and approved. From Township Attorney. Uh other expenses fifteen thousand to Township Attorney Salary and Wage fifteen thousand, I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Bishop Petracca.
Hi.
Bishop Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Hi.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex, New Jersey that in accordance with provisions of RS A forty-eight forty dash fifty-eight. Follow transfers of appropriation in twenty twenty-three budget be and same are hereby authorized and approved from. Water Operating Administration, other expenses fifteen thousand, water operating expansion, other expenses a hundred and ten thousand for a total of a hundred and twenty-five thousand. To Water Operating Operations Salary and Wage, hundred and twenty-five thousand, I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Bishop Petracca. Bishop Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Hi, be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex, New Jersey that in accordance with provisions of RS A forty-four dash fifty-eight, the following transfers appropriations. In the twenty twenty-three budget be and the same are hereby authorized and approved from recycling program salary and wages twenty thousand dollars. To parking lot meter maintenance salary wage ten thousand dollars, parking lot meter maintenance, other expenses ten thousand dollars, total twenty thousand dollars, I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Bishop Petracca.
Hi.
Bishop Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Hi. I'm gonna, can I combine these as Commissioner Petracca combined these sir? All right, thank you. Whereas NJSA forty-eight provides as Director of Division of Local Government Services may approve the insertion of any. Special item in the budget of any county municipality when such items shall have been made available by law and the amount thereof was not determined at the time of adoption of the budget. Whereas the director may also insert any item of appropriations for equal amounts. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey. Hereby requesting Director of Digital Division of Local Government Service to approve the insertion of item revenue in the budget. Of the year twenty twenty-three in the amount of fifty-nine thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars and eighty-seven cents, which item is now available as a revenue from the clean communities. Uh state fiscal year twenty twenty-three grant. Uh pursuant to the provisions of the statute. Um be a further resolved, the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex hereby requesting Director of Division Local Government Services to approve the insertion of a. Item of item of revenue in the budget. Of the year twenty twenty-three in the amount of twenty-five thousand which is now is now available as revenue from NJPDS Stormwater Assistance Grant. Uh be a further resolved by like some of fifty-nine thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars and eighty cents and twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh be in the same as hereby appropriate under the caption of general appropriations. Be further resolved that the township clerk forward two certified copies of this resolution. To the Director of Local Government Services, I move resolutions thirty-four, three four four twenty-three and three four three twenty-three.
Second, both of them.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Petracca.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Hi, this is uh read on behalf of the Board of Commissioners whereas the Nutley Board of Commissioners and Nutley Chief Police. Have approved the following plenary retail distribution licenses to open from nine AM to nine PM on Christmas Eve. December twenty-four, twenty twenty-three and New Year's Eve, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Mad Ya Inc. Trading as Heller and Heller, Franklin Wine Shop, trading as Nutley Wine Shop, Sri Shrinath. LLC trading as Nutley News and Liquors whereas the above plenary retail distribution licenses are only permitted to open during these hours. On the above dates and times now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey. Has granted permission to the above listed plenary retail distribution licenses to open doorings and dates and times as above, I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Petracca.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli.
All right, that concludes the business portion of the meeting. Anybody like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening? Seeing no one, hope to close.
Name second.
It says the next meeting is Friday, December twenty-ninth, I think we are canceling that.
Uh clerk.
Yes, uh there is no, we have no business for December twenty-ninth, our next meeting is June, uh sorry.
June would be nice though.
Uh January second.
Thank you.
Have a little vacation. Thank you for the clarification, Commissioner. A motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans. Bishop Petracca.
Hi.
Bishop Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Hi.
Time is now nine thirty-nine.
Good night everybody, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays.